Good evening. We are, welcome to our Thursday, April 10th, meeting of the Arlington School Committee. I'm going to read our entry and then we're going to go to executive session next door, then we're going to come back. All right? So, good evening. Tonight's meeting of the Arlington School Committee is being conducted in person and through the use of Zoom. This meeting is being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI and the meeting is being recorded. Because all members are present, votes will be taken by voice unless a roll call is required. Mr. Schlickman is traveling internationally, so will not be with us this evening. Persons wishing to access the meeting using Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. The posted agenda and supporting materials for this web meeting are also available on the town's website. Due to open meeting law restrictions, the committee cannot participate in or access Zoom's chat function while everyone is welcome to observe this meeting. Active remote participation requires advance notice. All participants are asked to activate their camera and shall provide their full name in the interest of developing a record for the meeting. We have with us tonight our AHS student rep, Zach Fawn, and our AEA rep on Zoom is Seif tonight. So, thank you for being here. I am looking for a motion to move to executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. But we're actually not talking about non-union personnel. Okey doke. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Negotiation discussions, there are a lot listed here, but my understanding is we are talking about AAA and AEA Unit C, correct? All right. So, I'm not going to read the rest of them because we will not be discussing them tonight, as well as school safety.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor? Actually, do we have to do a roll call vote to do executive session? Okey dokey. Ms. Xusten.
Yes.
Mr. Carden.
Yes.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
Yes.
Mr. Thielman.
Yes.
Ms. Gittleson.
Yes.
And I am also yes. All right. We'll be back. All right. Welcome. We are back from executive session. We are here to discuss and possibly vote on two MOAs, starting with Unit, with AAA, and then the AEA Unit C. Dr. Homan?
All right. So, it is our distinct pleasure to bring forward two bargaining agreements for the school committee's consideration, and I'm going to comment on each of them, but I want to start with AAA. Our Arlington Administrators Association is the AAA, and our leaders work tirelessly throughout the year to provide support and leadership to teachers and staff. The Arlington Administrators Association consists of folks in a lot of different roles. It includes assistant principals, deans, directors who oversee academic and operational departments, and all of these roles are critical to the system. These folks supervise staff and offer feedback on teaching. They develop school schedules. They plan and lead countless meetings every day. They administer major assessments. They organize interventions, discipline communications, and compliance, among a lot of other things. And this agreement is really exciting. It establishes some mutual accountability mechanisms for setting summer schedules and conducting work that's outside of the scope of an administrator's job description, which happens frequently. It allows for personal day carryover provisions, establishes parental leave, and provides for competitive salaries at all steps of the salary table. The process we undertook with AAA was truly collaborative, and we're looking forward to implementing this agreement in partnership with its members, and we're so excited that their agreement to this MOA was unanimous. And now on to Unit C. Do you want to do each one separately?
Yeah, let's vote this one so we can do Unit C as its own.
Okay.
Great. So, Mr. Thielman?
I move approval.
A second. It's just the door.
Okey doke. Any discussion on the Unit A contract?
AAA.
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 Goodness gracious. Do we have to roll call vote on contracts? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Awesome. Okay. Now, Unit C. There are so many staff members who we cannot do the work of schooling without, and those whose work ends up being underappreciated sometimes. But most staff members will tell you that the most important people in the building are the administrative assistants. Without our administrative assistants, nobody would get paid, no invoices would be processed, countless voicemails would not be returned, and we would be extremely disorganized. And this agreement acknowledges all of the amazing work that they do for our schools. The agreement clarifies points of confusion in language that was misaligned with other agreements in the district by establishing predictable vacation patterns for our schools and offices. It includes a mutually designed plan for ongoing professional development for Unit C members throughout the school year, something that has been sorely needed for some time and we're all very excited about. It provides manager and member flexibility in the implementation of break periods, snow days, and remote work, and it provides parental leave benefits for members. Finally, this contract establishes a fair and equitable revision to the salary grid, and as with the AAA contract, we're so pleased about the collaborative approach in our negotiation sessions and grateful for the unit's unanimous support of this agreement.
Excellent.
I move approval.
Second.
Second. Great discussion. Nope? All in favor? Yes?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Great. Thank you so much. Thank you to our Unit C and AAA members who participated in bargaining, our professional staff, our school committee appointees to this process. I'm not a big bargainer myself, so I'm deeply grateful that my colleagues and our staff and our, our union representatives take care of this for us. So, I'm glad that we have this, we have this done, and it's only April, which is great. So, the next item is public comment. I inherited all these sheets from Paul. Individuals or group representatives may address the committee on items of school business. The length of public comment segment shall normally be no more than 20 minutes. Speakers must identify themselves by name and address and will be allowed up to three minutes to present their material. The chair may reduce speaking time if needed and/or may permit extension of this time limit. Speakers may offer such objective criticism of the school operations and programs as concern them, but in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints about school personnel nor against any member of the school community except for the school committee or the superintendent in their capacity as the operational leader of the Arlington Public Schools. Under most circumstances, administrative channels are the proper means for disposition of legitimate complaints involving staff members. The public is reminded that the school committee does not hold jurisdiction over the performance of school personnel other than the superintendent. Tonight, we have three people for public comment, so everybody gets their full three minutes. The first speaker is Ms. Maderos. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Jen Maderos. I live in Methuen at 49 Clemente Lane, but I've taught English at the Odessa for the past 17 years. I'm also the second vice president of the AEA, but to be clear, I'm speaking here tonight for myself and not on behalf of the union. I would say I watch more school committee meetings than the average teacher. The school committee meeting of March 27th was not the first time I've seen someone in these meetings make negative comments about an individual identifiable teacher, and it's not the first time I've seen those comments go unchallenged. Though issues involving our kids are deeply felt and conversations can get heated, I ask all of you to be brave and put a stop to conversations that violate your norms in the moment before the damage is done. I have also closely followed the conversations happening around math at the middle schools. Though I am not a math teacher, math leveling impacts my class because of the ripple effect it causes throughout the schedule. I'm glad we are investigating our current approach to math instruction and hope that it will be a positive and nuanced discussion that invites the perspectives of staff, math teachers, of course, but any staff who has something to contribute, and casts as wide a net as possible in gathering the input of families. Not every family has the ability or desire to speak at school committee meetings, but that doesn't mean they shouldn't have a voice. The problem that has been identified is not new, and I hate to break it to you, it's not confined to math. I urge you to remember as the planning for a new way forward unfolds that every student matters, and there are multiple ways we should be addressing this problem. Just as there are students who would like to move faster, there are also students barely keeping their heads above water. There are some who say things are too easy, but there are others for whom nothing comes easy. As we investigate the ways we group students and the messages that we send, please stay grounded in our values, stay focused on the spirit of our strategic plan, and don't allow yourselves to be so distracted by the loudest, most persistent voices that you only address one end of this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Missouri.
Hello. Patricia Missouri, 18 Cleveland Street in Arlington. Since June 2024, it's now been 10 months, we parents have raised serious concerns about the math, and still there has been no meaningful progress for our student cohort. Back then, we had to involve DESI, which resulted in corrective actions and the reprimand over the issues with the math bypass test, yet the same patterns continue. A few examples, the AMC competition in January, which is American Math Competition, 50 years old, internationally recognized, it's a valuable opportunity for all students, was not advertised at all. A number of children in Arlington scored exceptionally well. They were not recognized. Many of them actually were prevented from entering the bypass class, told that they were not good enough. The upcoming Math Forum, which is at Odessa this upcoming Tuesday, was buried in an email and is scheduled at 8:45 a.m. in person only, which is inaccessible for most working parents. Many of us weren't aware that's even happening. This is not real community engagement. This is box checking. The math bypass process, which is critical for advanced students, continues to be barely advertised, leaving many families confused and unsupported. Meanwhile, our rising seventh graders, the 77 students, which represent 15% of Arlington kids, out of 18%, out of which only 3% were admitted, the 15 students in the class, continue to be neglected. It is clear that math and STEM education overall are not a priority here in Arlington. There is no signs that students who want to pursue math, science, and engineering have a meaningful place here at all. The school committee has no representation of us engineers and scientists who actually work in industry. It shows. It shows in the continued disregard for math and science academic excellence. We are not a small group. In just five short weeks over the last month, we had over 1,450 people who have stood behind this issue. Many families mobilized quickly because we are tired of being ignored. We are, we are tired of seeing our kids' needs ignored, and our kids and grandkids. So, we would like to ask for immediate action and a real plan to support advanced learners, starting with our seventh, rising seventh graders now, which have nothing yet to support them. We are not going away. We will keep speaking up until a real ground change happens for our kids. Thank you.
Mr. Vasilev?
I'm Dmitry Vasilev, 18 Cleveland Street. So, I would like to second what Patricia said, but I also bring up the issue that all of you like to cite, which are MCAS scores, which are achieved presumably by the students of APS. So, I sent you a memo, which I hope you have received with my analysis as a person familiar with statistics, and every educated mathematician familiar with statistic will tell you that. The numbers which MCAS gives us cannot be representative of performance of math curriculum of Arlington Public Schools because of something called cofactors, co-founding factors, or which, which is, which basically the cohort of scoretakers who are, received extra help from, from extracurricular activities, from extracurricular training, from schools like Art of Problem Solving, RSM, and this percentage of students is significant. We estimate it around 20%. So, this cohort artificially inflates the score, making not a realistic picture of performance of Arlington Public Schools. So, if you have a kind of follow-up questions, I would be happy to answer, answer them. And there are, again, statistician will tell you how to address this. This course can be corrected, and it's not a difficult process. So, what I suggest you can do, although you may have other ideas, is to send out a very simple anonymous survey, asking for individual students to, to state their grade, where they attend enrichment class, what is their math MCAS score, and how many years have they been involved in the extracurricular activities. That will allow for just simple math to correct the score and give an actual realistic assessment of what, 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 what is MCAS score that is achievable if a student would attend Arlington Public Schools in math without any enrichment. And that should be a fair comparison with, with two other, other districts, other towns, where, for example, RSM or APS is not available. It will also give other benefits, actually get a realistic picture of how many students attend these courses. It would create very meaningful figures, which we can actually provide for transparency. That is, I think, is important. So, that was in regards to the, the arguments that we, we, we can basically, we are comfortable with a math program in APS. It does, it does serve well. We need to, we need to question this. We need to question these numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda are, are AHS student representative, Mr. Fann.
All right. So, first up, the Haytown Musical. They had three performances over the weekend and then a very successful weekend. There were 20 to 10 to 20 tickets away from selling out. The auditorium, which is like the biggest, like, audience we've ever gotten at this new, this new school. Spring sports have just started up. I think we're like five games, most teams are like five games into the regular season. We had our last day of inclusion and diversity workshops. We had a keynote speaker and some other great, like, spaces to, I don't know, learn about inclusion and diversity. If you guys saw outside, the Downs House of the Arlington High School is fully demolished, so there's no more old building.
How do you feel about that?
I don't know. I, I was like watching the construction. It was kind of distracting, honestly. Like, in my classes, I would like look outside. It's pretty satisfying, but it's a pretty cool to like see out, out the building now and, you know, you don't see this old building. You see like, I don't know, the trees and the construction.
Nice.
And then last up, the student council is, has a lot in the, in the works. We have a pep rally, a talent show, teacher appreciation week, and both junior and senior prom.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Any questions from the committee? Great. Okay. The next item on our agenda is a discussion, a possible vote on the Arlington High School naming process that we are currently engaged in, brought to us by initially Dr. Homan and Dr. Jangar. Do you want to come to the mic just so that, you know, so that if this gets super exciting, you're, you're right there and we don't have to wait for you to step up? And then we'll have our conversation about sort of how we're going to move, move through our parts of this as well. So, Dr. Homan, do you want to go ahead and start?
Yeah, I'll get us started, and then I'm going to hand it off because I am not on the committee. So, what you have in your materials is a set of initial recommendations from the naming committee, which, just as a reminder for everybody, was the, the policy outlining how we would go about the decision process for bringing some names forward to the committee, for the committee's consideration, was developed by myself and Dr. Jangar, wrote an initial draft. We went through multiple iterations of that with policy subcommittee, brought it to the full committee for consideration. So, this committee's charge is to make recommendations to the full committee for consideration of names that we might want to add to some of the spaces at the high school. The high school building project builds in funds to do the signage for some of these spaces, but it's not an absolute requirement that we do that now. It's not a prohibitive cost to make letters so that we can put them above a space, and these are big decisions and they're not to be taken lightly. Once you name a space, that name of the space will probably outlive all of our 10 years in the Arlington Public Schools, quite likely, hopefully. So, we, we do want to emphasize that we understand that this is not, you know, a small decision to be made. It likely warrants significant discussion. Dr. Jangar and I are in agreement that there's not an imperative for the committee to decide to name spaces on any specific timeline, and that it's best to name the spaces after people who have had a significant impact on the schools and student experience, who are aligned with the values of the school system, and for the naming and impact of the individual to align with the space that gets named after them. The committee has provided recommendations for several spaces, but the naming rights live with you, the school committee. The committee can choose to forward sub, so I, we see a few options here for your consideration tonight, one being to choose to forward the recommendations to a subcommittee or combination of school committee's subcommittees for further discussion. You could send it back to the naming committee with some notes about process or a request for more information, or you could move names forward to the memorial's subcommittee if there are names that the committee feels are, are worth forwarding after you go through a couple of reads. Tonight is a first read. It's an opportunity to ask questions about the committee's process and considerations. Dr. Jangar is here to answer questions. He chaired the committee. Mr. Thielman is here. He served as a member, and I was not there. So, I, you know, I think these are, this is the committee, the community's school is the committee's building, and it's most appropriate that those decisions are made by the community and the committee. I'll leave it to you.
Great. Did you want to say anything, Dr. Jangar, just about, or did that sort of cover? You two seem very aligned over this.
You could talk about process.
I mean, so I guess, so first, I do want to say, so this committee was appointed by the school committee. I was appointed to be the chair of the committee, and so the committee as a whole took the mandate of the school committee, the guidelines that we had, what we were supposed to do seriously in terms of putting together a process for collecting widely nominations, and then for assessing those based on a rubric based on the values that the school committee put in there. We took it pretty seriously. It's kind of a humbling responsibility. To be perfectly honest, I would have been happy not to have been the chair of the committee. It feels like a very big responsibility. As the students were just saying, I have watched the large dinosaur-like machines tear down a building where I've spent the last 12 years of my life, and I saw the last piece of it go down with a pang, right? And there's a real sense of history. And so, the idea that we're going to put names that will last onto, onto that, that are supposed to, in the mandate of the committee, represent our values educationally and the values of people who've contributed to the education of children in the schools, is a big one. One of the things that happened in the process of all of this was that they handed me the brass plaque from Fusco House, which was sitting in my office, and I think it's important to notice, note that what we call Fusco House was built in 1914. It was named after Mr. Fusco in 1978. So, they went for a very long time where I think it was just the A building, right? So, there is not a necessity to have these beloved buildings be named right away. That said, I think we identified a wide range of people. We had 38 nominations. We reached out to not just the school as a whole and the community as a whole. We tried to get it in the paper. We wrote to diverse organizations throughout the community, and we got 38 nominations. We then voted for them individually based on the rubric that we put together based on the mandate that we had. Liz had commented earlier that she didn't feel like it was her place to have an opinion. I don't think that, as, although I'm the spokesman of the committee and the chair of the committee, I'm one person who scored one thing, right? And, and that was based on the rubric that we got. And so, I think that what we see there in the representation of the committee is what came to, back to us and then what we talked about. And we also, it's sort of talked about at the end, but I think it's important, there are a lot of really interesting and wonderful people who've made interesting and wonderful contributions to our community, who were discussed in the context of the committee, who are not nominated here because they don't, they didn't rise to the level on the criteria by which we were naming. But there are a lot of other ways in which we plan to represent and honor that history. Everyone who was nominated was, their name was put on a brick that will go on the community walkway. It will be in Arlington High School Hall of Fame. We have an old one. We're going to bring that back and add names into that. There's a number of History of Arlington and History of Arlington High School displays and programs being put together right now that'll come out over the next, probably it'll take a couple of years. So, that just because someone isn't represented here doesn't mean that there are not other ways. And then one of the things we talked about is that for some of these groups, they should be recognized here in Arlington, but maybe the school isn't the place, but that there are other places where certain people's contributions may be nominated. So, we're going to do both of those.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Jangar. On behalf of the committee, thank you for your work cheering this committee. I appreciate we gave you a, a difficult charge to take this first piece of this process and, and come back with us with, you know, with some initial recommendations for our review, and this gives us a place to start sort of having a conversation about where we want to go with this and how we want to do that. Mr. Thielman, did you want to say anything?
I would just say, I think Dr. Jangar and Dr. Homan summed it up. It was, you know, we did our very best to reach out to as many people, many groups as possible, the Rotary Club, the, this town's historian, anybody we could reach out to, every group. We put, posted on Facebook, alumni Facebook pages, so we did, we did a broad outreach. And, you know, there were lots of great people suggested that I, you know, some of them I obviously never met, but there were great names suggested, and we had a good process and we developed a good rubric. Dr. Jangar developed the rubric based on the school committee's recommendations. And so, our task was to finish this by September of '24, there, which we could not do. We asked for an extension to June 1st of 2025. We have a situation in which one space has already have, has a name on it. I don't know if we followed the whole process we were supposed to follow with the town, but we just formalized it with our vote. That was the discourse that, so that's where we ended up. And the, and the, and the charge was to name the seven spaces, and so that's what we, we focused on.
Can I just say one more thing? I was thinking about this.
Please.
This is a really nice thing, right? Like, one of the things I think that happens with these naming conversations is there eight names here, and there are 30 names that didn't make the cut, right? Or this cut. And, and so it becomes like we're relatively valuing different people or different people's contributions, but the purpose and goal of this is really, all of these folks, everybody who's considered, everybody we talked about, were people who we were honored and excited about, right? And so, like, I hope it's an opportunity to kind of celebrate all of these people, regardless of anybody's decision about what way you would honor them, and to celebrate the values that the school committee put forward as things that we wanted to honor people for. So, I've seen this, you know, it can easily become contentious in communities where people are like trading off between people, and I hope that we don't end up there because I think it's such, I had a really fun time learning about all these people.
Yeah.
Right? I had a really fun time hearing from people in the community who were excited to share some of these people with me. And so, I would hate if anybody came out of this experience with any sense of being less respected or disappointed.
I would just add one thing. I think, you know, like, I was talking to Sharon Grossman, one of the members of our committee, and, you know, I think we all felt good about the process and felt good about where we ended up. All of us felt like we did what we were asked to do, and so. But as I said to the committee, the way the process works, I explained to the committee is we're an advisory committee of the school committee, and now goes to the school committee, and it goes from there. That's all we can do. We can, and I, you know, anything can happen. That's what I, I think I left it at that.
Great. Thank you. So, we need to sort of decide as a group how we want to move forward with doing any of this naming. I have some thoughts about what I would like to see happen, but I, I don't want to talk first unless there's, nobody else wants, nobody else has any sort of thoughts about where they want to go, or, I suppose maybe we could start with, do people have questions for Dr. Jangar or Mr. Thielman, and then we can have, we can try to navigate how we're going to go.
Mr. Spiegel is off.
Oh, and Mr. Spiegel. Sorry. Yes. Thank you.
I prefer Dr. Jangar and Mr. Thielman.
Happily.
We kind of look alike.
They were, Dr. Jangar.
They were—Dr. Jenger runs a good committee.
Thank you. Mr. Carden.
So, two questions. So, the groupings of students, which used to be named after the buildings, you know, related to a dean, where you were in Downs House, Column House, Fusco House, is that going to continue? How are you going to call that?
So, the house system was named after the buildings that the houses were in because it worked. We haven't been calling them Fusco Column or anything House for about three years now because it really has broken that up. So it's—to the extent that there are houses, it's DeLoreto House, Tivnan House, McKnight House. With the fourth dean that we're planning on getting next year, my guess is we'll have to figure out—because right now the architecture and where we have people split up follows a weird combination of—you know, right now Ronnie Tivnan supervises math and history, which are in opposite corners of the building because they used to be in Downs House. So we're toying with that. We're not sure, but it will probably be more mathematical and alphabetical.
So that brings my follow-up question for Mr. Thielman or Dr. Jenger or whoever. So those names are going away along with Mr. Low for the auditorium. Was there discussion on that? Were they just not nominated, or how was that handled?
So, the town policy is that the names for buildings go away when those buildings go away. So there was the Tazlowski Gym, the Low Auditorium, Fusco House, Column House, Downs House.
Yeah.
We have collected all of those brass plaques. I have a vision, although it hasn't sort of been ratified, but it's been something we've talked about, that the outdoor amphitheater by the Black Box Theater would be where we would take all of our memorial plaques and put those on display, and that in the future if people wanted memorial plaques, they would go there. It's generally a recommendation around sort of not having memorials all over the building, but to have a place where people can go as a sort of memorial garden. So we have collected all of those plaques, which, by the way, are very heavy. But—which is why I, for example, know when Fusco House was named, because that one's sitting in my office.
Yeah, one thing I would say is that, you know, Jason or Dr. Jason Erv from—was on the committee, and he said that in his experience with this sort of thing, it's not unusual for a university or wherever just to kind of recognize the former name of a building or the former names that were in a former facility. So that's something that we talked about doing.
Right. So those—those names will go in the History of Arlington High School, so Low and Fusco will have bios that are in part of that display. Some of those names were put forward by the community and reconsidered as part of the process.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Yeah.
The nomination process, were people—I was just curious when I looked at, like, the seven different buildings and the bios that went with it, were those—were people nominated for specific spaces, or did you just have 38 names that you were, like, picking seven of and then figuring out, like, which made the most sense?
I can speak to that briefly. So, there was a motion by the Arlington High School Building Committee to name something in the performing arts music area for Brian Riehrig. So there was one specific recommendation for him. He was a member of our committee and, you know, obviously very active in our town. And for everyone else, I don't believe there was anything specific. Dr. Jenger, do you recall? There might have been in some of the email—there might have been in some of the nominating thing of the name.
So, obviously, the building committee had recommended a dedication, not a naming, of the discourse lab.
A dedication, correct. That's right.
And then Brian Riehrig had been recommended for the music room, but there was actually a request—I have a letter from their family requesting— saying that if you're going to name something, we would love the Black Box Theater. So they had made a request. I don't know—I mean, things came in a wide range. Some people wrote you a beautiful essay about the thing, and some people sent you, hey, you should really name something after Matthew Jenger. Nobody said that, but you know what I mean? Like, just one name. And then we had to do a little bit of homework ourselves.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Exton.
I'm curious about sort of the vetting process. So it sounds like you got some where there was a very long, lovely description and lots of reasons why, and then you got names. Like, what—what process did you go through to sort of ensure that the names that you were ending up selecting really embodied all of the sort of requirements that were listed here?
I would just—I—I—Dr. Jenger can add to this, but we did the best we could to get the word out to the community, and then we under—we agreed as a committee— or maybe I said this and no one objected—that the best—the only way you can really vet these names is to take them out of the committee, bring them to the school committee for discussion, follow a process in which they go to the public memorials committee, and then they're vetted. We couldn't think of a better way to vet it. There was—I explained to the committee, there is a process for vetting, that when it leaves this committee, it becomes public and people can comment. And then the school committee has to manage that.
Okay. So, in some ways—
The vetting starts now.
That's potentially—okay.
The vetting starts now. I mean, I think that came up in committee, and I said to them—you may have just their different view of this, but I—I said, the vetting starts once this becomes public and it leaves this room. That's when it starts.
I would say—so, vetting, I would not say we did. I would say this—we had a pretty broadly representative committee, not a lot of people, but it represented a wide sort of the corners of Arlington. So we all gave our input, and honestly, the extent to which we knew or knew of the people was in part part of the rubric, right? Because it's like how much someone is known and understood, and part of the community is represented in that. In the way that we have those little bios there, those are updated because we've actually spoken to the people to make sure that they were more detailed on how things they wanted. But we did, as part of giving all the committees the information to score, do a quick Google search and update with what we knew about any people if we didn't have something more substantial from the nominators. But we did not do rigorous research. So if somebody was—somebody had a good web presence or an obituary that we could draw from, then I'd put a little blurb in the information that people had to vote on, and otherwise it was what we knew in the committee.
But as we said, you know, the—if there are things we don't know about the candidates, once—that—that's the purpose of the public memorials committee. That is the purpose of that committee, to get into the public the names of people you're going to put on a building so that those who might have information about them positive or maybe not positive can speak. That's the process.
And just so I under—like, a public memorials committee is an appointed committee, but like—I don't even know who's on.
By the town.
I know what it is, but like, how does one become a part of it?
I think it's appointments by the moderator, the town manager.
So does this go there next?
Yeah.
After we vote?
Well—
And then they vote?
We need to decide as a committee what we want to do with this list.
Yeah.
And speaking only for myself, I'm not convinced that the public memorials committee is going to do the vetting and public research outreach that I personally would like to see. So I think that—and maybe I'm sorry if I'm jumping ahead from questions—
No, go ahead, yeah.
But I think that the seven of us need to take an opportunity at a subcommittee to think up—to talk about this more before we put it forward to the public memorials committee. To me, this is a—like, this is a—this is a huge responsibility for the seven of us. This is—it is our decision, and it is something that is going—these names, once they're voted on, are going to be on this building forever until it gets knocked down, which is going to be a really long time. And so I think it's really important for us to take—to take our time and to take our responsibility in doing this seriously and to do our homework about—the names that we saw.
So, I guess I—I haven't said anything yet, and then—
You know, one thing I just is—I think—
Oh, you have something else you'd like to say? Go ahead, yes, please, by all means.
I'm sorry. One thing I would say is that we—if we sign this to a subcommittee, which could be a good solution—I wouldn't be opposed to it, I would vote for that solution—is let's talk about how you would vet people, because it's—it's like—that's easier said than done. There needs to be a process to vet people, and you would—and that committee would need to figure out how to do that. I don't know how to do it. I haven't thought—I'd have to think about it myself. Thank you.
So, I mean, it seems to me that we have—we have a few options, right? We can—we still have the—we do still have the naming committee, right? I—I would like at some point to absolve them of the June fir—like, I would like at some point for us to acknowledge that they have met our deadline and our—our charge of them, right? Which was to come to us with something. So I'm mindful of that June 1st date, so at some point I would like to say, yes, thank you for your service. You did what we asked you to do. June 1st isn't tomorrow, right? So, we could—we could go back to that committee with some feedback from the school committee. We can bring it to our—you know, bring it to subcommittee here and have a conversation about how we want to do this. I'm—I'm not hearing a lot of appetite at this point, but maybe—we haven't heard from everybody to send this—the recommendations whole cloth on, you know, tonight or, you know, right away. So, I'm not going to speak to that as an option just because I'm not—I'm not hearing that from folks. I—I, like Ms. Exton, feel—I will admit to being sort of—you know, this didn't really become real to me until I really, like, sat with it and thought about it. And it—it does really feel like a huge responsibility. I'm actually really moved, Dr. Jenger, by what you said about Fusco House, not like 10 minutes ago, right? Like, that is—is really impactful to me. I am not—I am not in a rush to name any of these spaces, to be perfectly honest. I—I'm—I'm willing to engage in the process to name whatever this committee wants to do and will vote to—to participate in those decisions, but I—I don't feel like—I don't feel a huge sense of urgency over this because it does feel like a really big deal. So, I guess what we're looking for is sort of a path forward with where we are right now. So, Dr. Allison Ampe.
Well, you know, I was going to say one thing.
Please.
We should—I suggest we move forward with the discourse lab.
All right.
Discourse lab.
All right, let's—let's get—hear from Dr. Allison Ampe, and then we can—we can start to peel these out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think—okay, especially after hearing that we're intended to vet the names, I do not feel comfortable moving this forward to the memorials committee tonight. I like the idea of discussing them in subcommittee. I like the idea of potentially sending things back for reconsider—reconsideration, depending whether—I'm not sure there's always the best fit of name with space. That's not to say a given name would not necessarily want to be in the high school, but I'm not sure if all the names and spaces match, and that's something that we could—you know, we've got other—we've got many rooms in the high school. So we are—I mean, these ones are in the contract for the high school, and that's why they're important and why we're discussing them now. But that doesn't mean we have to name them now. You know, it just means we won't use that part of—will we even have to pay—will we get money back if we don't? I don't know.
We have to.
Okay, anyway.
You asked me a question, just so you know. You opened yourself up to be talking.
No, it was a yes or no question. So, that would—my desire would be to send it to subcommittee. We can—at least the subcommittee can discuss, and the rest of us can—can join in in terms of vetting, and then make recommendations to the full committee as to whether it goes by or over.
And in your mind, could it theoretically go to a subcommittee, and then would it go back to the naming committee? Or do we feel like the naming committee has done what we've charged them with doing? Or—we want to leave open the option of—of moving back there? Like, I—I guess I'm trying to—
Yes, yes. I'm saying—I want to leave that open.
You want to leave that option open?
Yes.
Okay. Is there—I agree with that. Okay, all right. So there is an appetite to retain that committee at least for the short term. Dr. Holman and then Mr. Thielman.
Yeah, I think there was a recommendation in the report that we're figuring out where it went in Novus because we thought it was there, and it's not. But that—that had sort of a creation of a sort of a more longstanding committee that would meet annually, but I think keeping this one in place for the short term and then having a conversation once we make decisions on this proposal for a longer-term committee that might meet on a routine basis or as something came up or as somebody made a recommendation. You could sort of keep that existing, but not necessarily active unless it needed to be longer term. That could be a separate committee.
Mr. Thielman.
I'm not sure that—which what the committee envisions for the timeline—I perfect—I think it's a good idea to send it to one of our subcommittees for further discussion. I would say to you that we have already put the name of one person on one part of the building, the discourse lab. So it would probably be good if we voted tonight to send that to the public memorials committee, and you just make sure that all is processed properly.
So do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I move that we forward the name of Dr. Kathleen Bodie to the—to the public memorials committee for consideration as soon as possible. For consideration as—for the naming of the discourse lab as soon as possible.
I'm looking for a second.
A second?
Okay, for discussion. I mean, is there discussion?
Well, it's on—but it's on—
Can I just—so how did it—
Ms. Gittleson, and then Dr. Allison Ampe, and then Mr. Carden.
How did it get named if it was supposed to go through—I—I'm a little confused about how that happened.
Mm-hmm.
Feel free to talk, Mr. Thielman.
Well, so, my understanding is—is that in May of 2021, the school committee—which many of us are here, but not you—made a—we took a vote to dedicate a plaque in the discourse lab to Dr. Bodie. That plaque went—in an effort to be really eye dotting and T-crossing—that plaque went to the public memorials committee.
Oh, it did? Okay, so maybe—
It did. So—but it was a—we were careful at the time because we were trying not to name it, right? We were doing a plaque, but we were trying to do all the things. So, to my knowledge, there is no plaque in the discourse lab. No, okay.
Plaque was designed—
It's been designed, yeah.
But I don't think it was ever made.
Okay. So, that is what we have voted on. I can report, having been in the discourse lab, that there are letters on the wall outside of the discourse lab that indicate an affiliation of that space with Dr. Bodie—
With that person, with Dr. Bodie, okay.
—with the person who was before us tonight.
So it appears like it has been named.
I think one could reasonably imagine if one walked into that space that it had been named, yes.
Okay.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
I'm trying to remember why—why do we do the plaque and not the—I—
Because we were—we were specifically trying not to name it.
Right, but why were we not trying to name it?
Because—for exactly the reason that we're now here, like, trying to figure out how to deal with it. Because we didn't want to put the cart before the horse and—and do a naming—
Okay.
—out of—you know, that was my understanding.
But it's been through public memorials.
Yes.
So maybe we don't need to do that.
I think—I think we're—I—
Then let's not do it.
And we've already approved—I mean, okay.
It definitely went through public memorial.
Okay, then I'm not—
Then let's—oh, then you know what? I withdraw the motion. Let's not worry about it.
Yeah, okay.
It's on the current superintendent's issue.
Oh, sure was, yep.
So, procedural question. Are we therefore authorized to move forward with the naming of the discourse lab? Because it's been through public memorials.
Yeah, it's named.
And it's dedicated to Dr. Bodie.
Well, I think—I mean that—
Mr. Carden.
Clarification. That—that sort of was my confusion all along, was that—I think there was some confusion from the public memorials committee about what it was we were doing, right? So I do think we need to figure out what it was they approved, and then since we didn't actually vote to name it, we do need to vote to name it. We voted to dedicate it to Dr. Bodie.
That's, yeah.
It's dedicated— It's dedicating it to Dr. Bodie is slightly different from naming it for Dr. Bodie.
Right. I believe the public memorials committee dedicated it per the recommendation of the school committee.
It's not really within their, their.
But that wouldn't, yeah.
Their, their.
No, they didn't, they.
They're a naming committee, they're not a dedicating committee.
Yeah, Mr. Thielman. I'm trying to pull it up. I literally have the, what they agreed to in my email. I'm just trying to find it.
I don't think it's that complicated, but we can, if you want, you can have the subcommittee discuss it maybe if that's what you, is that?
Okay, so the, the, yeah, we can do. The note from Mr. Salaponte to Mr. Hayner said, "Thank you for notifying the public memorials committee of your intention to dedicate the discourse lab at the New Arlington High School in the name of Superintendent Dr. Kathleen Bodie." So, um, I'm looking to see what they responded with. It's, it must be in Novus. But I think we need to go to subcommittee and.
Sure.
And try and find this and so we know exactly what we agreed to do. And, and we can take that one. That one can go first because we're, we're well on the way with getting someone done.
I'd say so. I'd say so, pretty far along on that one there, yep.
Pretty far along.
Yep.
Okay, so any more discussion? Is, so, so are, what we now need to do is decide where this is going to go?
The discourse lab is staying where it is.
Okay.
I'm not moving it.
Okay. Dr. Allison Ampi.
Final decision on that.
I move it goes to community relations.
I saw it coming my way.
Second. Okay, discussion.
So we will add it to Novus just so the people will be able to see.
It's now in Novus.
The report.
Yep.
Back in.
Okay. All in favor of sending this to, as a, as a next step? And, and we, we own this whole process, right? We can, this can be a step. We can go, we can take it in a, you know, in this direction or that direction. There's no, we have no obligation to sort of preset all of our steps, right? We're only, right now, we're planning the next step.
I mean, I would say the, the committee is well, I mean, I, it was pretty clear that this gets to the school committee and then anything can happen.
Right. Mr. Carden.
Just to clarify, I mean, the, the policy that created the advisory committee says the committee disbands once it makes its recommendations, which it has. So the superintendent can create the same, recreate the same advisory committee. That's certainly her prerogative, but it says, upon completion of its work, I guess you could, you could, uh, say its work isn't complete, but it, but its only charge is to make recommendations, which it has done, so.
I think if we're thinking about sending things back.
Rejecting the recommendations.
Yeah, we haven't accepted it, right? So.
Yeah, well, I also, they, they did a lot of work and I'm, I'm actually curious in some of the names that were not in this list that was brought to us. So I don't want them to disband and then us not have an opportunity to, to get information from them about other names.
You can invite members of the committee to the subcommittee if you want. And if they come, they come. I mean, that's all, yeah.
Okay, so all in favor of sending it to community relations?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Opposed, abstentions? So I did locate the letter from the public memorials committee and it does appear as though the letter that Mr. Hayner sent them did indicate that it would be a memorialization in the form of naming the high school discourse lab in her name. So we do have a letter from public memorials. So I would, my recommendation as this goes to community relations is actually that the Kathleen Bodie discourse lab is, is done. That this was, that, you know, we, we have the letter from June 10th, 2021. We, I believe we accepted this letter at the time we voted on it. So I, I think that piece is.
So there was no, nothing further?
There's no fur-, the discourse lab is, is done.
Good.
Over.
Okay.
Done. So what you're just, you're, the, the charge to community relations as this next step is to consider what, if any, of the other spaces, what, you know, what pieces of what we've received, like what we're, you know, what we're moving forward and then ideally a recommendation for a next step, which doesn't have to be, we've completed this, we're bringing it back to the committee, you can vote on the whole slate, right? It can be another interim step as well, I think. Yes?
So, yeah, that's fine. I just would say, one of the things that confused the committee, us on the committee, it was me anyway, was that on the, on the, on the policy, the discourse lab was listed. So that's why we didn't.
I can see how that would be confusing.
Yeah, so I said, well, who knows? Maybe we didn't do it right. That's basically what I said.
It, it looks like we, it looks like it's been done. So I, I think, I, reading this now, it looks like it's been done.
Great.
Great. Okay, thank you for this. Um, next, oh, so this is discussion and possible vote, I am not sure that the vote is necessary, around the reappointment of John Maher to the permanent town building committee. So what I will say about this is typically our practice when we are looking for appointees is to send that to community relations. Big night for community relations here. What I will tell you, Ms. Gittleson, is that when I read the bylaws around the permanent town building committee appointments, they are quite strange and actually, thank you, Dr. Jinger, um, the appointing authority for the permanent town building committee are actually the three chairs respectively of the select board, the school committee, and the finance committee.
Have at it.
So my understanding and read from that, but I wanted to come here, I believe that Dr. Allison Ampi has come, has done this in the past, so I just wanted, so, one, we have John Maher who mercifully would like to be reappointed, which is fairly straightforward. Robert Jefferson is going to be coming off of the PTBC and so he will need a replacement by June. I believe that I can do so, I can reappoint Mr. Maher unilaterally because it is not the will of the school committee, it is just the chairs of these three. But I, I just wanted to bring that to everybody. One, so that you knew it was happening and two, to confer. So, Dr. Allison Ampi, can you, because this is, you've done this before, yes? You've come up, done this PTBC one before?
I think I've done this, I mean, I did this in 2010 or 2013, I forget which, but it's, I looked at the same thing that you're looking at and it does have the, the appointing authority is in the chairs, it's not something, you're not appointing as, you're appointing as the person who is chair, you're not appointing as a representative of the school committee, although I certainly thought about that when I was doing things. But I actually was, it, I appointed Mr. Maher when he first started on it. I think Bill did it once too. I mean, when, when things have come up, I think.
Sounds good. Okay, so I am going to go ahead and reappoint Mr. Maher pending Ms. Deschler and Ms. Mahans and then Ms. Deschler, Ms. Mahan and I will get together and find somebody to fill our, the other vacancy for June and I will report back to all of you in with who that is. Next item, discussion and possible vote, district calendar, Dr. Homan. This is the 25-26 calendar.
Yes.
So that is next school year.
Yes. So you've already reviewed this several times. We needed to adjust the conference dates because we had a change, shift in the contract for, that starts next school year. So the AEA contract we finalized last year, but the adjustment to include an additional elementary conference, one in the fall, one in the spring. It used to be that we had one of them in January. We needed to adjust the dates and wanted to make sure that we had consulted with principals and AEA thoroughly before we did that and also wanted to check them against term dates and assessment dates. So we've done that and this calendar has conferences, a ti-, dates adjusted. You'll see that there are elementary conferences at, in, in the fall and then again in the spring. I believe that we caught all of the other notes that had come from the committee meeting and we're going to bring the other, the next two years to you at the next meeting with the conference dates similarly adjusted on those calendars. Just as a reminder, teachers have been contractually required to attend three evening events per year. Open house and conferences will be the three moving forward per contract that, that they'll be in attendance for. We're excited to offer this opportunity for parents to connect more frequently with teachers and educators are excited about it too. So we're hoping that this could be sort of a final vote, we could send it out to everybody again so that they know what the plan is for next year and can plan ahead.
Great. Any discussion about the calendar? Can I get a motion?
No move.
From Ms. Exton, seconded by Mr. Thielman. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of approving the 2025-26 district calendar?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed, abstentions? Great. So the next item is a, we need to look at the FY26 budget one more time. There have been a couple of amendments that have needed to be made and we wanted to make sure that what we were sending, that there was alignment between what we were sending to town meeting and what we had voted on. So it, you know, we, we wanted to make sure that any sort of administrative changes that needed to be made before town meeting had our sort of stamp of approval on it. So I will leave this to Mr. Gorski and Dr. Homan to walk us through this a little bit in terms of, of what we are revoting, so.
Yep. So we are grateful for some of our town colleagues who pointed out and asked a question about something that didn't make sense on one of the program schedules in the back of the book. It pointed out to us that we had a formula error that had not drawn through the master budget sheet, the contractual stipends. We, you know, we, we check these things over and over and over again and are surprised that we missed that, but have triple-checked everything once more, are confident that we have it all in there now. And what, because it's an adjustment that is fairly significant, wanted to make sure that the committee understood what the adjustment was and we more, we compensated for it more or less by adjusting for operational plans. That is some of our buffer and so one of the things I've also communicated to leaders is that as we have vacancies, we're going to look very carefully at those. And if those vacancies are things that are not absolutely critical for us to fill immediately, then we may consider whether or not it makes sense to do so based on the current situation and whether or not we have had any funding compromised, particularly federal funding. So we are aware that we might need to be pretty nimble with the FY26 budget and that some of our buffer went into correcting this error. Mr. Gorski will, can walk through what we adjusted in a little bit more detail and there should be a list in your materials of the changes that were made that are reflected in the revised budget document as well. Go ahead.
Thank you, Superintendent. So as Superintendent mentioned, as was pointed out by a member of the finance committee, that the, it looked as if we were cutting our athletic budgets, different programs, and obviously that was not the case. Made the adjustment, went back and adjusted those project stipends so they were correctly pulling into the budget file. Obviously that, that brought us over budget, over the 103, 630, 672. Went back and identified possible reductions or adjustments to bring us back into balance. I'll just quickly go on. Oh, okay. Hopefully people can hear me now. So just, we made adjustments in several areas on the upside and a few positions on the salary side. For the department budget, we reduced the percentage increase to 4% that, that was originally at 6%. That's a reduction of just over 147,000 for either district tuition and transportation. And again, this is mainly a, a rate that's set by OSD of 3.6. That's a rate, inflation rate that's set by the state at 3.67%, but we also had some other potential students who we're looking at for next year. There's a reduction of just over 21,000 there. Went back and took a look at the anticipated utility increases with Talia Fox, the sustainable, sustainability manager on the town side. So we're able to reduce that amount, that increase to 275,000 for FY26. Science curriculum, we had put extra dollars in, so we're able to reduce that by 10,000. The next two lines were related to one-to-one devices or Chromebooks or staff devices. On the student side, we reduced that by $30,000. We also have funding in the FY26 capital for student devices and for the staff devices, which would be Chromebooks primarily for PARRS, we reduced that by 20,000. There's also dollars in the FY26 capital budget for PARRS, not to cover the entire amount. The intent of that additional funding in the budget was to ensure that we would have funding for all PARRS. And then we had an additional line for, and there's a cutoff in the sheet that you have, but it's facilities maintenance and refresh of equipment. We reduced that line to 100,000. And on the positional side, reduced one of the reserve positions. There is an admin assistant at Thompson that was a 1.0 addition in the budget that was reduced to 0.5. And then there's a BCBA that was reduced to 0.5 as well. And that brought the budget back into alignment and as the superintendent mentioned, we went back through and checked, rechecked all the formulas. As part of this, I just mentioned to the committee, since we're talking about it, we've gone in, I, I know that, I mentioned that we had a number of corrections that we were making as we were going through building the budget. We've already gone through and worked with payroll to make those changes and we're already looking at Munis, the position control module, to take that aspect out of Google Sheets and then also looking at the budget module of Munis. So kind of as finalizing the budget, making the fixes that we've talked about throughout the year. So some of those, a lot of those are already taking place and also looking at the future at how, you know, different software solutions as we move maybe potentially away from Google Sheets.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gorski. Any questions? Mr. Carden.
So on the, on the devices, this is more of a budgeting question than the changes, but once that's in the budget, is that intended to roll forward for future years?
Yes.
Yes. So if we come up short this year, then next year we'll be able to.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, looking for a motion to approve the FY26 budget.
So moved.
Mr. Thielman, seconded by Dr. Allison Ampi. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Abstentions? Great, thank you. Uh, the next, oh, superintendent's report. Here we are.
Okay. I'm in a version of Zoom I've never experienced before. Oh, no. And it's asking me to fix permissions.
It's all right, take your time. We're good. Everybody's, we're fine.
Things look a little different, but we'll get through it. All right. So I am very excited to share that the Arlington High School musical was a smashing success. It sold out and was just absolutely stunning. For those of you who were able to attend, I know I have heard from many, many community members who were so impressed with the work that the students did. It was a student-produced, and I say debut of Hadytown teen edition because we, like, got our hands on that script as soon as it was actually available for musicals in high schools to be produced. So we were among the first high schools to ever do this musical. It is a musical that was new in 2020 on Broadway and that has a lot of commentary in it about our current moment, about finding hope in the face of tragedy, about love and freedom and authoritarianism, and was just very timely and beautiful and haunting and exceptionally well-done. The music was outstanding and our students were just really a sight to behold. It was really cool. The set and all of the production work, the lighting, the mics and sound are all done by our students. They learn about how to do that in their classes and they put the stage and set together and think about how it goes with the themes of the musical and that's. And that's something that we're only able to do because we're in the new spaces. So, it's better every year. And this year was really something special. Also, this weekend, we had a very, very busy weekend in Arlington Public Schools. Also, this weekend, we had families and friends gather for the annual Arlington Metco Bridging Two Communities Family Walk. I think Dr. Allison Ampe was able to go. And it's a wonderful opportunity, rain or shine. It was not a fun day to be walking around outside on Sunday on, yeah, on Sunday. It was a little wet and a little bit dreary, but they had a lot of fun anyway. And we had a great turnout. It's a great opportunity for our families who live in Boston and our families who live in Arlington to get together and get to know one another. And also, we hosted on Saturday a Coffee and Conversations Hiring Event that welcomed 60 prospective candidates to the high school. Folks who we talked to were interested in all sorts of positions across the schools in all disciplines at all levels. And it was, they were also very grateful that we had the opportunity to, that they had the opportunity to meet with us. And we had held the opportunity for them to see the high school and to come in and talk about what they were interested in pursuing. So, it was a wonderful weekend all around, some great celebrations of some of the work we're doing here in Arlington, and a great opportunity to celebrate the work that our students are doing in their classes. I'd like to share a couple of events coming up as part of our math work as we start to think about how we're going to engage the community, as we enter a planning year, to think about equitable pathways. We will be holding a community screening of a film, Count It Out. You have to apply to be a screening site for this, for this documentary film. It's open, the screening is open to the full APS community, families, students. We do recommend, like, not recommend, we ask that students be 10 years or older for the content. It can be fairly intense content and dense content. Staff, administrators, it's free, but we ask that those who plan to attend register using the Eventbrite link. So, there is a QR code there. We'll be sending some messaging out about this opportunity to engage and join us. We'll be holding it at Arlington High on the Forum stairs. Food will not be served, but attendees are welcome to bring snacks or picnic dinners since we'll be in the AHS cafeteria area.
What's the date?
It's, oh, my goodness. Did I not put the date on there? Dr. Ford Walker, can you unmute and tell me when this is happening? I thought I had the date on it. I hope she's there.
I am here. Yes. Can you hear me?
Yep. Do you have the date by any chance?
Yeah. The date is on, I'm sorry, give me one moment. It's on April 28th.
April 28th.
Yeah. Monday, April 28th.
I will update my slides and make sure these are in Novus as well. So, April 28th, Count It Out. It's also on, if you grab the QR code, it says it on the Eventbrite link as well. Thank you, Dr. Ford Walker. We've been, we've also, I wanted to share with everybody that we're making adjustments to the timing and accessibility of forums that were previously planned. We've heard some of the feedback also from educators who want to join the informational forums about some of the work we're doing in mathematics. So, we're working on adjusting the plan for those. They will be in the evening. They will also include a virtual option for families who can't make it during the time that we were planning on holding them. The goal of these initial sessions is to inform the community about our planned adjustments for next year and the adjustments we've been making for this year and the goals of our pathway planning year ahead, as well as some of the things that we're taking into consideration as we move forward with planning, including budgetary considerations, scheduling considerations, and some of what we know about how these pathways operate when you're in the midst of a school day. So, and we're also hoping to answer questions if community members have questions. So, we'll be sending out more information about exact dates, times, and locations for that soon. We need to get building permits in and everything so that we can know for sure that we have the stuff and setup that we need for those. But we are working on that. There will be opportunities for the community to come and learn about what we're up to and engage with it. And we also hope in those forums to give a sort of a picture of how we're going to go about the planning process for next year, which will include what we hope is a representative committee to do some actual digging in and planning and research work so that we can bring a recommendation forward to the committee to consider for pathways. And I, you know, we're focused on math, but I also want to echo what Ms. Maderos said, which is that this really does impact a lot of different disciplinary areas and is sort of a full school endeavor to make sure that our kids have access to the learning that is going to be engaging and challenging for them. So, we're starting the conversation with Count It Out and a film and some discussions about some of our work in math. But we are cognizant that it is really encompassing, all-encompassing of all of our programming. So, we want to make that clear for everybody as well. A few more updates. The Welcome Center team will be hosting a virtual new family orientation on May 22nd. The topics that will be covered in these new family orientations are specific to sort of district-wide things. It is good for families who are coming into the school system to know. It'll be recorded and we'll post it on our website for any families who register later on in the summer, maybe. It's going to cover things like school hours, safe routes and ways to get to school, transportation regulations and options that are available to families, critical contact information, how to navigate our website, school breakfast and lunch details, and what our parent organizations are, how to get involved or access support. If you have ideas for topics that might be useful for this to cover, then please feel free to send them my way and I will forward them over to our registration enrollment team. And the Addison Middle School Statement of Interest to the MSBA got submitted today. I want to thank all of you, the Select Board for their support. We went to see them on Monday evening. The Town and School Facilities Team and our other Town and School leaders who provided a lot of extensive support with the application process, went and found information, did things like count windows. So, we've, we've done a lot of work to get the OMS SOI in, and it is in one day ahead of schedule, which is fantastic. There are enrollments in your materials. And we continue to be on track for K-registration and having more enrollments at a quicker pace than we have in the past. And I'm happy to take any questions that the committee has.
Questions? Dr. Allison Ampe.
Mine isn't so much a question as a comment. So, I was able to go on the Metco Walk, which was really fun. It was in Franklin Park. It actually wasn't that rainy. It was kind of drizzly and gray, but it wasn't, we weren't getting totally wet. But as part of that walk, I talked to Dr. Creedle Thomas because I was wondering, since the coffees that we start, originally, we started these coffees to be diversity coffees, hoping to increase the diversity, especially to attract diverse candidates, to increase the diversity of our staff. And I know they're not named that anymore. And I was just wondering if that was a problem. So, I talked to her about this. And what she said was that there is another event earlier where they're reaching out to diverse candidates. And those candidates are told about the coffee and specifically invited to it. And so, I thought that was a nice, it kind of gives them a couple touches and makes them realize what's going on. So, I, I'm sharing it because I thought it was an interesting thing to know. And it's, I think it is effective in terms of trying to attract more diverse candidates to our schools.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Warrant number 25224 in the amount of $750,208.89 dated 4/1/2025. Arlington School Committee Special Meeting Minutes, April 7th, 2025. Arlington School Committee Organizational Meeting Minutes, April 7th, 2025. No move?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Yes.
Opposed, abstentions? Great. Subcommittee liaison reports and announcements. I'm very impressed, Ms. Diggins, that you have updated all of these people because I would not have known who was in charge of each of these subcommittees if you hadn't provided me with this delightful cheat sheet. So, we are going to start with budget. Dr. Allison Ampe.
I have a new budget. A revised budget.
You have a new budget. You do. Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Community Relations, Ms. Gittleson.
I guess we will be scheduling a meeting about the naming of the building things.
Yes. Or maybe several. CIA, Ms. Exton?
We had a meeting on April 7th, right before we reorganized, where we discussed, we got an update from Dr. Ford Walker on SSTs. And we have another meeting scheduled on May 5th where we will hopefully be getting a draft of district goals for next year.
Great. Thank you. Facilities, Mr. Thielman.
We're trying to get a meeting at the end of the month of April to review the tech and space plan, which we need to present to the committee in May. So, we have a bunch of dates going. I should probably include you on that. Ms. Diggins has some options.
Great. Policy and procedure, Mr. Schlichtman is not here. Arlington High School Building Committee, Mr. Thielman.
Downs House is down, except we have to get the foundation out. And then we prepare for fields and parking lots.
Great. Liaison reports, announcements, future agenda items. Seeing none. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Thielman.
So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Exton. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, abstentions? Thank you very much. We're done.